Good evening and welcome to the October 9th Open Space Board of Trustees Meeting. Let's start with calling the roll. Trustee Carol.
Present.
Everybody switched positions, I don't know where everybody is. Okay, trustee Glenn.
Present.
And trustee Robinson.
Here.
Trustee Zuckerman.
Right here.
I'm here and we have a full house. Okay, let's move on to approval of the minutes. Aw, man, I left my package. No. Approval of the minutes, we'll start with page one and ask for any proposed edits. Anybody on page one? I do have a couple of edits on page one. Second paragraph from the bottom of the page. And we talk about the update of the subcommittee and Marshall Mesa Trails. So if we get to the third sentence, we say she added that there are three projects happening simultaneously that will affect the South Boulder community, I would like to say, add and bike community disproportionately. And then at the end of that sentence, we talk about how and that I asked for staff to consider delaying the South Mesa Trailhead construction. And I'd like to add, and instead, use the budgeted resources to build the park, the trailhead, I'm sorry, the Coyote Trailhead is the name of it, the Coyote Trailhead that was approved in the North TSA to serve the North Sky Trail and the future Mahogany Trail.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that? I didn't quite track that, so.
Yeah, so basically, I'm trying to add the context because of that conversation, which is that it disproportionately affects the South Boulder community, the three trail closures that are happening in really close succession. CU South, Marshall Mesa and South Mesa. But adding that it affects the South Boulder and bike community disproportionately.
Got that one, and that was the other change?
Okay, the other one. Delaying the South Mesa Trailhead and instead use the budgeted resources to build the Coyote Trailhead that was approved in the North TSA.
Okay, got it. And this is this whole paragraph.
And future Hogback.
This whole paragraph is what you had been talking about anyway, so this is your, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Just wanted to make sure I was tracking that.
Yeah, I'm not saying just delay the building or the reconstruction of that trailhead, but instead to use resources that were already budgeted and already in the work plan. So to give the folks in South Boulder a little bit of relief. Okay, page two, anybody have anything there? No. Okay, page three. Okay, I don't see any, but I do have one. Under return to the board. The last, second to last sentence says, but she said she is concerned about timing. I'd like to strike the word timing and, because this is referring to something I said, obviously, about applying closures and restrictions given high potential for changes in nesting habitats in the time it will take to construct, which is seven to 10 years. That's all I had on that page, anybody else? All right, so then, that's the end of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I'll move to approve the September 2024 minutes as amended.
I'll second that.
Okay, awesome. I'll start, I'll call the roll, so Brady.
Yeah, yes.
John?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Passes unanimously. Okay, let's move on to public comment. We have no public hearings tonight. Sam, can you please read the rules of decorum?
The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff and board commission members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement processes, please visit this link. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make any threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they are commonly known by and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently only audio testimony is permitted online. If you are joining in person and would like to speak during public comment or items identified for public hearing and you haven't signed up in advance, please sign up at the table and we'll call you up to speak at the podium. If you're joining online, you can raise your hand to speak during public comment or items identified for public hearing. You can do that using the raise hand icon or by clicking the participants icon, then the three dots on the bottom right and select raise hand.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Leah, do we have some folks signed up?
Yes, we have one person signed up in advance. Do you mind just grabbing? Sorry. Thank you very much, thanks so much. So first to speak, we have Shirley Schaller, followed by Carol Affleck. So Shirley, if you're here, you can come up to speak at the podium.
Hi, I'm Shirley Schaller and I have lived in the Boulder County and City of Boulder area for a little over 73 years. And a couple of months ago, my friend Carol and I were here in regards to the Chambers, Poor Farm and Wells property that is being worked on for what we consider a very worthy project. And I am related to the Chambers that lived on the property where the fort was located. After the meeting, or during the meeting, it was kind of our understanding that we were a vital part of this with the information that we have collected. And I know Carol has collected information since probably before 1990 in regards the Valmont area. We just would like to make sure that if any written narratives are done, that we are included in that. I'm sure the Native Americans would be doing their story. And we want to make sure that we would be the main contacts and writers of the story of that area. In fact, most of that story is already written in the historical paperwork. I am not good with big names. I had a little minor, it wasn't surgery, but I am still recovering from anesthesiology brain. And so big words are out of my vocabulary. But I just was kind of wondering, has anybody contacted you to write this story for the Valmont people? And I'm directing that to you, Dan.
So Shirley, Shirley, your time here is.
Okay, well, that's fine. I am, that was just my last question and thank you for your time and thanks.
Thank you, Shirley.
Next, we have Carol Affleck.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to us again. We're back. We are appreciative of what's going on. We feel left out. We feel excluded. We keep emailing Dan and Katie and we thank, thanks for your reply, but but we're really wanting to be included as Valmont people. I'm representing Valmont, Rural Historic Valmont and Valmont School District Number Four Cemetery Association. We honor the history of the tribes. Our history matters too. Everybody's history matters. We're interested in knowing what next steps are. We want to know when we'll be included to have some input about the interpretation. I listed all the buildings, I listed the whole property and all the buildings on the National Register in 2001. But I worked on it way before that. I've listed the landmarked Valmont School. Stagestop is landmarked up there and we have lots of history there. We want to share that, but we want to be included in sharing that. And we, we really are frustrated that we don't have a seat at the table. And we would like to see that happen as soon as possible. So how do we make that happen? We think we are the primary source of information for the settlers' history. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking forward to hearing something, please.
Thank you, Carol. My understanding is we were in the concept phase of it and not in the design phase yet, so I don't know if you want to kind of speak to.
Thank you, Carol and Shirley. So we are in the transition phase, as I would call it. So we are done with concept and we are building out what a framework, how we could best engage with community members that are interest groups. And we actually go in, we are tentatively scheduled to come to the board during quarter one and report out on sort of a framework for how we're going to engage various partners and trusted stakeholders and provide you with some timelines and milestones for moving into the design phase. What we've done the last couple of months is there are some real estate issues that we still needed to do research on and work through regarding that 90-degree turn and who owns what. So that's one issue we're working on. We also checked back in with the tribes late in August just to confirm that they wanted to proceed and being represented in the design phase, which they did. So yeah, I can understand Shirley and Carol why there's some frustration on your part, but you haven't missed anything. If you have any additional information that you have, we'd love to get it. But right now, we're still in sort of designing what the next phase looks like and we're going to be back reporting out to the board and we'll certainly let the entrusted community members know as as soon as we have sort of that roadmap prepared. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Dan, for updating us. Nothing has been missed. Just be rest assured. Brady, you want to speak?
So they say they feel like they haven't had a seat at the table. Is it fair to say there isn't been a table yet?
For phase two, which is the design phase, more the details of what the educational and interpretation looks like, where it will be exactly, how it would be presented, there's been no movement on that. We are sort of behind the scenes, working on developing the process for what that would look like and how people are going to be brought to a seat at the table. So there hasn't been any seats right now.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Can we give them any indication of what, what and when the next step might be from their perspective?
From a staff perspective, we're having our second brainstorming meeting and developing that out. I believe it's next week or the next, so by the end of the year, we should have somewhat of a foundation present and then we're going to come back to the board, get your input. Are we missing something here? And then we will sort of start the, more of that bringing people, bringing the seats at the table.
So there'll be more information at the December meeting?
No, quarter one.
Q1, okay. All right, thanks for your comments.
Did we have another speaker? Okay, we don't. I'll go ahead and close public comment then and move on to matters from the board. So this next section, we have three consent agenda items. We, this is our second go with this. And this is a process that usually involves us passing items without discussion unless it gets called up by a trustee. So I would first like to see whether anybody wants to call it up and if not, I would like to see us individually pass each motion this go around. I think in the future, we would like to do them as a package, but we were asked to make a couple of just clarifications in the language regarding the intergovernmental agency agreement with the Boulder County, Boulder County due to the Colton Trail, co-management of the Colton Trail. Okay, so can you pull those up, Leah? Okay.
Can I just note that this is an outcome of our last staff retreat? And I want to thank everybody for.
Board retreat.
Board retreat, yeah, board retreat. Want to thank everybody for making the consent agenda vision a reality. This is very gratifying.
Yeah, I love it too. Has saved us presentations. Okay, so this is the, oh, this is the first one. Okay, so this is the first one that we, potential motion and we can actually read them together though, right? Okay, we could do one or do, okay, let's do one at a time. I'm waffling, sorry. Would anybody like to actually make this motion? Go for it, John.
I'll move that the Open Space Board of Trustees recommend city council approve of the proposed amendment to section 575, city manager authority to grant permission to consume alcoholic beverages on city-owned property, BRC 1981, to allow alcohol consumption at events that support agricultural activities on open space properties with a current farm, crop and grazing lease in good standing.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Brady?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Passes unanimously. Okay, second one. This is just, we had some suggested language in the packet. This modification clarifies that we are really addressing the City of Boulder and not City of Boulder Open Space Department and same with Boulder County. That we're, because Boulder County actually owns the land, the management is irrelevant at this point in time. So would anybody like to move this? Brady?
I'll read this one. Brady moved the Open Space Board of Trustees to recommend city council approve an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, concerning the management of the Colton Trail on property co-owned by both the City of Boulder and Boulder County in substantially the form of attachment B.
I'll second that. Calling the roll, Brady?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
All right, and I also vote yes. Passes unanimously. Boy, we are going to be cruising tonight.
Want to point out, if we're substantially in the form of, doesn't include typos and I think we can point them out in a consent agenda. Section two, it says tis agreement instead of this agreement on the consent agenda, item B, page four, if somebody wants to pick that up.
All right. The only thing is we don't get to see as much of like Bethany, I think, when we're doing all these. I like that little lady.
She does miss you.
Tell her I said hi. Not.
She's doing her presentation right now, anyway.
Okay, we've got another one. All right, it's up. Oh, it's coming up. It's coming up. All right, anybody?
Oh, did you follow? We can both read. So I move that the Open Space Board of Trustees recommend granting a non-exclusive license agreement to Public Service Company of Colorado Incorporated acknowledging the installation of and permitting continued access to three groundwater monitoring wells on the Valmont Butte open space property as part of the company's groundwater remediation and monitoring project on the larger city on Valmont Butte property.
Okay, and do you want to second it?
I second that.
Okay, great. Brady?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Harmon?
Yes.
Sarah? And I also vote yes. Passes unanimously. Okay. Next item is trustee questions on written information items. We have two in our packet this month, one on Wonderland Lake ISP update and the other one is cultural stewardship program update. Any questions or comments on either of those two? Okay, all right. Seeing none, I'll move on to the next item, which is an OSBT retreat prep discussion and update. So the subcommittee is Brady, is made up of Brady, Dan and Harmon. Do one or both of you want to give us an, just an update? I mean, the agenda is in the packet, but.
Yeah, I mean, the agenda's in the packet. I think it speaks for itself, so I won't, yet Harmon, you have any color commentary on it?
Oh, you know, I just think that it's worth saying on the record what Dan wrote in the preamble to the matter in our packet, which is that these were the items that were the most, the burning items to talk about. And there were other burning items that didn't make it onto the agenda because they're coming up in pretty rapid succession and soon to be upcoming OSBT meetings. So rather than talk about them at the retreat and then talk about them again in January, we're we're just going to talk about them in January. We're going to talk about them on the December agenda. So I think the point is everybody's concerns, we're taking it to consideration. Thank you all, other members of the board, for submitting the things that you were interested in discussing at the retreat and we hope you like the agenda that we came up with. And then the last thing would just be the red text that talks about who might lead. If, if you don't speak up, you're going to end up leading on those items where your names appear. So feel free to not say anything and therefore volunteer yourself. But if you have something that you really want to do instead, or you really don't want to do the one you've been tentatively assigned, now's your chance.
I think I will add too, just regards to what landed on the agenda, is that if you feel like your agenda item was not representative, we will have the lunch hour in which we are attempting to identify what topics are of interest to individual trustees that based on then some prioritization you all do amongst yourself, it could be suggested that they either be part of a field trip or part of a future agenda item. If you feel like you want to call it out specifically, there's an opportunity during that portion of the retreat too, to make sure an item that's on your minds gets some airtime at the retreat and then it possibly does land as an item you all want to talk about in 2025. So there's that opportunity too.
Thanks. And I guess the one thing that I really liked about the last retreat was the section that you facilitated, John, the one with the sticky notes, which I think is basically happening under number one. And so, you know, what's going well, what would, well, maybe not, what worries you? But I think your, your, your exercise was, you know, we got to put what we wanted to see in 2025. So it was more of a visual and we got to see everybody else's sticky notes. But I think what you just spoke to, Dan, was like if you, we don't see, we were mainly talking about the following year's work plan, I think, when we were doing that exercise. But I think we can also bring other ideas up in the section number, discussion number one.
Some of that is going to happen over lunch.
Yeah, the lunch is.
Specifically over lunch.
Yes, yes, the agenda setting.
Yeah, we'll, we'll provide you with a document that says, from a staff perspective, here's what's already on our minds that we feel like needs to go before you. But we purposely, for instance, did not fill out any of the field trips. So you all could help us say, what's of interest to you? What do you want to go see? What do you want to explore on a field trip? If there's specific items you're not seeing in our 2025 look ahead and it's on your mind, you can bring it up to the trustees and, and you all could help us determine if, if an item lands in a business meeting, for instance.
I'm sorry, I missed that. You already just said that. Okay. John, I would maybe invite you to take on number one, though. I'm currently, I'm currently assigned to it. Which I'm happy to do, but also want to give you an invitation.
Publicly in front of everybody with no warning.
You can think about it. You can think about it.
Sure, I'm happy to take that one, or were you about to?
Just make sure everybody gets a chance.
I was going to say, if you're looking for equal distribution, I haven't seen what's happening in number one, but I am the lunchtime 2025 meetings. And if John has a format for doing that and you, that's a beneficial format, then certainly I'm happy to either co-facilitate with you or hand it over to you or.
I can, I can share some of what I did in the past.
What that means is he's going to give you a pack of different colored.
I love.
It's a lot of post-it notes and stickers.
I love stickies. Okay, good. Yeah, okay, great.
So you would take on number, the lunchtime one then?
I can advise.
I advise, okay.
And help.
Yeah, I'll just point out that I think, and Brady and Harmon, we wanted to have one agenda item that was a little bit more free flowing, what's on your mind type of thing. So I would say the first topic doesn't need a lot of facilitation. It's more, that's probably the homework you all have, is taking a look at those questions that Brady and Harmon and I proposed about what's on your mind as it regards to open space. What are some concerns? What are we doing well? You know, just a chance for you to just speak freely on a sort of a matter that you want. And so that seemed like a retreaty type of issue as opposed to a business meeting that's really scripted. So I would say it's light on the facilitation for number one, but Brady, Harmon, if you feel differently, then.
Yeah, I'm happy to facilitate that. I'll probably bring sticky notes into it somehow, as I do, but yeah, happy, happy to.
Thank you. All right. And I can do the heavy lifting on the number two. We're both part of the subcommittee. Okay, any other feedback about the retreat? Otherwise, we're, we're going to go for it. Thank you for organizing it and it's awesome. I know it will be. Maybe we'll get another consent agenda thing out of it. Okay, so matters from the department. Pass it over to you, Dan.
Yeah, thank you. So yeah, we have three items under matters. We're going to start with revisiting and provide you an update on our fee study and we have a guest here as well. And Sam McQueen is going to help do a presentation with JR supporting that. And we have some results of the fee study. And there's also a follow-up to this, which is address, considering some recommendations now that we have results. So sort of splitting that up is, which tonight is more about the results. The department will go back and be looking more at some recommendations that we may have based on the results. So tonight is an update on what we have found out in terms of cost recovery. So I think I'm, we're starting off with Sam.
Yes, starting off with me, thank you. So good evening, trustees. My name is Sam McQueen. I'm joined tonight by JR Clanton, who is the project manager we've been working with from Barry Dunn Consulting Group to perform a comprehensive fee study. We're excited to have JR joining us tonight and he's working with us on this project. He's actually a former City of Boulder employee and has direct experience with our organization. He previously ran a CIP program for the city. I apologize, hold on one second. For the city and worked with transportation and also supported the finance department. So very excited to have him on board. So tonight, I'll start by giving a brief overview of the background and purpose of the fee study. Then I'll turn it over to JR to discuss the project's scope and plan. And we'll close by sharing results of the fee study and save time at the end for any questions. So we undertook the fee study for three main reasons. First, it's part of our financial management practice to determine if OSMP's programs that charge a fee are recovering costs to administer the program through revenues. Staff typically perform these types of cost recovery analyses in-house each year and share the results with the OSBT during the annual budget process. It was important for us to work with a consultant to better understand the types of expenses we should consider in a cost recovery model based on language. from existing plans, and to better understand industry best practices in these types of studies. A consultant-led comprehensive fee study is also addresses previous OSBT questions around the department's fee structure and cost recovery. And finally, the project aligns with the city council priority to review a long-term financial strategy. Just a quick reminder of the four OSMP programs that charge a fee, which were the focus of this study. They are the Voice and Site Tag Program, Parking Charges, Special Activity Permits, and Facility Rentals. A description of each program and the fees charged are included in this month's packet. And as we shared at our presentation to OSBT in February, the department issued a request for proposal earlier this year to seek a consultant to complete this comprehensive fee study. The goals of the project were to determine the cost to provide services that charge a fee, determine if current fees are sufficient for providing associated services, and to seek recommendation for changes to fees to appropriately recover costs if needed. After a competitive process, the contract was awarded to Barry Dunn Consultants. So I'll turn it over to JR from here to talk about the project.
Thank you, Sam. So happy to be here presenting to you all tonight. This slide here is a review of the purpose of the study as we understood it, which, like Sam was saying, is really about understanding how much it costs to provide the services in those four key areas, if the fees are consistent to support those services in those area, and to develop fee adjustment scenarios based upon not only cost recovery, but also the operational, and then of course, policy considerations associated with those programs. And if there's anything I can emphasize on this slide, it's the fact that we're not just looking at revenue in, expenses out. We really are looking at things comprehensively, and we're trying to look at things from the perspective of, again, services being provided and community benefit of, in compliance with your objectives and policies for the programs. So we've been really working a lot with your staff to develop the model. Just a overview of the process we're taking. The five phases you see up here, well, really, it's four phases plus project management. But we have completed Phase One, which is the cost of service analysis, where we've really done a lot of work to identify the costs for the four program areas, and then to identify also the revenues associated with them in order to develop your cost recovery percentages for each of those programs. Following this phase, we go into policy updates and recommendations, where we basically say, make recommendations for various fee scenarios for you to consider moving forward. And that'll be in the form of a report. Then we have the draft findings and recommendations, and of course, a final report. So we're moving along. We've made a lot of progress, and we have, I think, a pretty good model developed so far. So just a graphic to really show how we're approaching this, past, present, and future. So we looked at previous performance of the programs, not only of revenues and expenditures, but also utilization metrics for each of the four programs. We looked at the present, which is the budgeted numbers for this year. And then moving forward, we'll develop future scenarios based upon projections moving forward. So a past, present, and future approach to the fee study. And then the next step, again, is moving on from the actual financial model, which is my favorite part of it. There's also going to be a policy recommendation part of it. And so that'll come to you, to you all, and be developed through in the format of a memo.
Thank you, JR. So over the next couple of slides, I'm going to share the results of the cost recovery analysis for the four programs that were included in this fee study. More details about the expenses and revenues for each program are also included in the packet. So the study looked at 2023 actual expenses and fee revenues, and the 2024 budget has example years. So first, the Voice and Site Tag Program is recovering direct costs over the duration of the program, as you can see here. The program recovered about 95% of costs in 2023 and is expected to recover 111% of costs in 2024. Parking charges are also recovering direct costs over the duration of the program. It recovered 122% of costs in 2023 and is expected to recover about 98% of costs in 2024. Special activity permits are also recovering costs over the duration of the program, with 74% of costs recovered in '23 and 107% expected in '24. And finally, the Facility Rentals Program is recovering costs over the duration of the program. It recovered 157% of costs in '23 and is expected to recover 147% of costs in '24. Next steps for the study, JR mentioned that his team will use the data to provide policy recommendations to the department. Generally, the department feels that we are appropriately recovering costs based on those current fee rates. And the study will also inform the next phase of the work in the department, which includes a review of potential program structure efficiencies, impacts to visitor use if fees are restructured, and equity in our practices around charging fees. We'll also use the model to perform annual cost recovery analyses during the annual budget process. The model was intentionally created to be flexible and easy to use for OSMP staff. And finally, the city's finance department will undertake a citywide comprehensive fee study to address the city council priority to develop a long-term financial strategy, and OSMP will be part of those efforts. Closing out, does the OSBT have any questions for staff or Barry Dunn Consultants about the department's comprehensive fee study?
Harmon?
So I was just curious about the decision to really limit the calculation of the knock-on effects of the program management, so that you kept the numbers that you have to recover cost for smaller than they would be if you started looking at, you know, things like percentages of staff time. I guess, you know, it's certainly an easier calculation with hard numbers if you're not trying to calculate the knock-on effects. But it's just interesting to me that you made that policy decision on the study, and I'd like to hear more explanation as to why.
Yeah, so we made that decision through our partnership in this process. We wanted to focus really on direct expenses, and those direct expenses did consider things like staff time. So staff time is considered in all four of these categories. So percentage of staff time spent on administrative tasks, for example, but not the broader perspective of administration across the department, for example. I think it's, for us, we confine that more close tie to the, to the actual, like, services that are provided. Instead of saying, a parking charge, for instance, gets you access to our entire system, we wanted to limit the scope of what those parking charges were actually paying for in a direct way, instead of sort of broadening it to the whole system.
Yeah, one of our interests in bringing in a consultant was, every year, we, staff were, what is a direct cost? What is an indirect cost? There's lots of indirect costs. Do we feed those into the equation or not? What's the industry standard? And that's one reason why, after years of doing it ourselves, that we wanted to get somebody independent to help tell us what the industry standard is for what a direct and indirect cost is, and what should this model be based off of. So that was one of the reasons why we wanted to seek some outside expertise. So I don't know if you want to comment on direct costs and what the industry typically does with those things.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think, just building upon what's already been said, this model absolutely includes percentages of staff time allocated to programs. And it was actually the first thing we calculated when it came to direct costs. So staff time directly attributed to these programs is absolutely contemplated. And we did it pretty detailed. We did it by both salary as well as benefit costs.
So let me clarify what I think you're asking, Harmon, is, like, for example, the Voice and Site Program, it's like you can't say that, attribute a portion of rangers' time to talk to people about dogs, because it's, they are talking to lots of different people in that day, and about a variety of different things. So it gets harder to attribute something, even though it's staff time, as indirect as that. I think the staff time that you're, that you're considering is directly related to the administration of the program.
That's exactly, yes, thank you.
But the people who are on the periphery supporting the program are not factored in. And I think that would be pretty hard to do. So...
Yeah, thanks for that.
Did we have other questions? Go ahead, Brady.
So I'd like to hear a little more about Tabor. And there were a few, my reading of the memo is that if we're recovering more than 100%, it might be considered a tax in that it would potentially average out over years. The board packet didn't include running averages or previous year's data. And so how much of that is a concern? And are there any cost recovery areas where we are consistently going over 100%? And if so, what does that mean?
Yeah. So I can address some, and then JR, do you want to jump in as well too? So when we were initially digging into this study and what we've done in-house in previous years as well, there isn't a set standard for this is the number that means you're recovering costs and this isn't. I think it was for us important to look at it over at least a couple of years. And we've been doing this, like I said, in-house for a while. We really did need to get this, this model set up with the help of a consultant to figure out what a direct versus indirect cost, are we attributing the right expenses? But I think you'll, you'll see in certain programs that there is big fluctuations in revenue, and we, we know why there are fluctuations in revenue. So we want to look at it over a couple of years. So for us, when we were considering whether something was recovering costs and felt okay saying that, yes, it is, was if we saw over a couple of years that there was a trend, that it was going to be around 100%, not exactly 100%, but maybe near it. So we didn't necessarily set that level. And then JR, I don't know if you want to say any words about what you've seen in, you know, in terms of like, what's comfortable for cost recovery as well?
No, absolutely. And I'm not a Tabor expert, and I'm not a lawyer, so you'll have to obviously get city attorney to weigh in on this if it goes down that route. But generally speaking, the ability of organizations to make a decision on fees and their nexus to providing services is pretty broad. And so the fees collected by these programs are supporting an entire open space system pretty directly. And so there's more to it than just the administration of the program. So that's, that's one way to, to look at the fee question. And if 100, if anything over 100% is going to trigger some sort of Tabor thing with fees.
So, but are there any of these four programs that are consistently over 100%? Like I said, there wasn't running averages, there wasn't pastors' data.
We do. We do have some that we, again, this is, we had some when we did it in-house that were over 100%, but did not, again, feel super confident that we had the exact right expenses, which is why we undertook this study. 2023 is based on actual expenses. We feel, so we feel like...
So that's the baseline that we feel good about, and we'll be basing off of that going forward. Okay, that makes sense to me.
I think we probably need a couple more years of data.
That's fair. Thank you. And I guess the last thing, and this is just a bigger question. I don't know that the memo addressed it. What role does thinking about equity and access and who can afford these fees, like, where does that factor in?
Yeah, that's the, for, that is in the next phase of this work. We wanted to use this to understand if we were, if we were recovering costs, that was the baseline we wanted to start with. And then Phase Two of this work is going to be looking at things like, are we charging the right people for the right things? Are we charging, are we being equitable in our practices for charging fees? Program efficiencies, all of those types of conversations that we need to have internally now that we have this baseline. And then we are going to build on this model every year to make sure that we are, if there is a big change in cost recovery, that is also going to inform how we, how we review our programs, so.
Thanks. I want to piggyback on that question about, about equity, because we also are going to talk about the Pove study tonight, which outlined that 90% of our open space users are white, highly educated, and, and obviously very affluent. So I think fees is one way to kind of balance things out when we're looking at the programs that we deliver with an equity lens. I wanted to ask, because when I was on the Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we undertook a fee study as well. And we also looked at it from a market rate, you know, comp perspective. And I didn't hear that in the exercise that you all took here. And, and that leads me to the question about parking, because parking is only charged to people who don't live in the City of Boulder. And some of the allocations are the hotspot in order to charge for parking. So, and then some pretty, I think, interesting math to get to direct costs to substantiate that fee. So when I think about comps, like in parking, when, when we go to Jeffco, we, as City of Boulder residents, we don't get charged to park there. But we, we do that to our neighbors. And so I'm just wondering, you know, did you look at this from a market rate perspective at all? Was that part of the scope? And I know that, that maybe parking fees are codified, and so that's just a thing?
Yeah, so we performed a more detailed review of the market a few years ago. We did it not as part of this study, just separately, but leading up to this, just to see like, what, what are other municipalities charging, other park systems, things like that, just to get a understanding of facility costs, permit costs, parking costs. That is, I think, an important next phase to figure out if we're still in line. Generally, in terms of what you were referring to with the types of expenses that we're putting towards things like parking charges, what we said were direct expenses, this was our first year with the model. And I do think you brought up the Poves data. We did incorporate it in some ways. I think there's a lot of work that we want to do over the next several years to make sure that if the fee stays the way it is and is only charged to number or county residents, we're just super clear about exactly what we're calling a direct expense, that's going to be work for us to do internally. But yes, I think a full market analysis is going to be part of this work in the future as well.
Okay, thanks. You know what I'm getting at, though, right? Like, City of Boulder's very white. And then, but we're saying that people who don't live in the City of Boulder have to pay. And so we're perpetuating inequity by charging them to use our public land. Sorry, it's Boulder County, right? Yeah. But also Boulder County's very white. So, you know, if somebody were coming from Denver, and we're, we're kind of like, yeah, perpetuating the cycle of inequity by charging only people who are outside of Boulder County.
Do you think it'd be better to just charge everybody the same amount? Is that what you're suggesting?
Or not charge? Yeah. Lauren, did you want to?
I think you're, hi, Lauren Kilcoyne, just to comment on that a little bit. There's, there are a few things that are sort of coming together in department practice. So a lot of, yes, they're codified fees. They were also determined through the visitor master plan process. And part of what's in the VMP is describing some of the direct costs. So there's language that says something to the effect of, the parking fee will discourage single-vehicle trips to trailheads and will also help to pay for maintenance of the trailhead and surrounding trails. So a lot of that helped us to at least build this first phase as we, as we worked to integrate Poves data and everything like that. We're currently, we're, we're the first department in the city that's writing a department equity plan and that's building off many years of equity work in the department. And equity is called out as a key strategy in the master plan. And so concurrently, we've been talking with you all about our climate planning, which encourages multimodal use, and also the city strategic plan, which encourages different ways of getting around the system. And so those are sort of all, when we keep talking about Phase Two, I think there's a lot of policy work and planning work already in process that we want to make sure is informing that in a, in a more thorough and comprehensive way. So that is our intention. We're hoping to finish that internal equity planning work by the end of the year. And we've been working with all of the managers and the department to prioritize what some of those land management actions would be to address some of the barriers that you're describing. Now, will parking be the thing that is highest priority? I don't know the answer to that yet. We're still in that process. But I think what, what we've been trying to look at consistently is in what ways, how, how is our structure contributing to some of the systemic barriers that people are experiencing? So at the time of the VMP, which has been a long time, the thinking was that... the thinking was that with the high level of tourism on Chautauqua, that that would be, that Flagstaff would be an appropriate place to charge parking fees. And then in the southern end of the system. But those are things now with the current updated thinking and some of these planning efforts that we're starting to look at.
Okay, that's, thank you for that. And we'll somehow loop back in the fee work into that work.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Other questions about this topic? I remember when it came up before, I think, everybody else's time and with previous trustees. And so I'm glad to see this get to this stage. Okay, all right, so we'll go ahead and pass it back to you, Dan.
Great. Thank you, JR. Thank you, Sam. Next, we're going to talk about a trailhead improvement plan that is starting. And we wanted to provide you an update as we begin to look at one of our most visited, or the most visited, sorry, trailhead. And that is our Chautauqua Trailhead. And we are in the beginning, the design phase for that. And with that, I think Jeff, you're going to kick things off with some opening remarks. And then Bill Wildenberg is going to take us into a presentation. So Jeff?
Thank you. Jeff Haley, Deputy Director for Visitor Experience and Infrastructure. Just to follow on Dan's introduction, Chautauqua is one of our foundational kind of legacy, you know, trailheads and access areas that we've talked about many times. And so this is exciting this evening to share more about the site planning and more of the infrastructure, kind of the boots-on-the-ground type experience that our visitors have and our residents at Chautauqua. As you all know, and I feel like I've said this many times over the past several months, as we've looked at trailhead renovation projects, we did a pretty exhaustive study several years ago, looking at condition of trailheads, where improvements are needed, what those might improvements could be. And so Chautauqua certainly falls in line with that as one of our highest priorities. So that's why we're actively working on that. I'd like to just remind you all, we're talking a bit about the retreat coming up later this month. And we will be at Chautauqua. And I think part of the retreat will be a little walk and talk, walkabout and visit the site. So we can certainly, things you might hear about this evening, we can certainly look and talk about those on the ground as well, which will be a really interesting opportunity. There's a variety of adjacent projects that are happening, as Bill will mention here in a moment. A lot of work is happening in the Chautauqua campus and surrounding areas that you all are aware of. And you'll learn more tonight as well. So that's kind of leading towards us wanting to take a close look at this site too. And then lastly, I just want to highlight, Bill will mention some more on this as well. We, you know, we have Chautauqua outlined and identified within our capital improvement program. We just went through our budget process earlier this year. In some of the out years, we have Chautauqua identified for funding. But by no means do we feel like we have all the funding that might be warranted or required for the project. So as Bill will mention and kind of get into, this will certainly be a phased approach. It's not unlike any other project we talk about where we want to look at it comprehensively. We want to plan it and design it comprehensively. But it may be a multi-year implementation process. We have a variety of needs and priorities across the department within all our different service areas. So this is one that'll take careful consideration. And then lastly, with the funding aspect, you all remember months ago when we talked a bit about the Boulder Open Space Conservancy, our philanthropic nonprofit partner. This is a project that they, that board has identified as a potential kind of priority project for them to help support as well. So with that being said, because it is a well-loved community asset and location in place, we'd like to seek out private-public partnerships as well for implementation. But that's about as much as I can stall while.
I've got a question we can stall a little bit. It's currently, it's currently torn up. Right now, what's going on there? And I presume it's not part of what we're going to talk about tonight, or is it?
Yeah, that's actually a great question. So as with any location, to answer your question directly, we're installing a new drinking fountain. And so we've had over the past several months, problems with the drinking fountain that's out there with water lines and et cetera. So we've basically extended a new line out to that to have a new hydrant for drinking fountain, filling up water bowls, dog bowls, et cetera. So, and that's the thing too. I mean, Chautauqua, the Ranger Cottage, the Trailhead, it's always under some level of construction, just repairing things. So it's definitely reached that place of needing a major overhaul. So, but that's the current work. We have a couple interim things that we've done over the past summer. But we're really looking forward to the larger project.
It looks like Bill is ready, but I'll just, I'll just say that everything at Chautauqua is more complicated too. I just think because of the terrain and then also because of the landmark status of a lot of the buildings. Having served on the Chautauqua Board as well as the Parks and Rec Board, I got to see Jeff do a roadshow of toilets, the toilet. The poor guy had to do, had to visit like every department to install one toilet.
Yeah.
So we get to do this again, I guess.
Yeah. And that's actually a great point, Michelle. As you'll hear Bill mention again, like complexity is the name of the game at Chautauqua. And that's one of the things, again, that kind of warrants us really looking at this comprehensively to make sure all the different pieces and parts. And just to highlight that project right before.
It's a two-year toilet, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's right. Toilets.
Not exaggerating.
But just that project in itself, similar to this, just to install new restrooms behind the auditorium was a multi-year, multifaceted project. So, yeah. I think, Bill, we're ready for you? So Bill Wildenberg is one of our senior landscape architects. You've had a lot of experience with Eileen Flax over the past several months. Bill is similar, he's doing a lot of work as well, so I'll hand it to Bill.
Great, thanks. I'll also let you know that we're not just doing the water fountain, but some stairs are getting replaced real soon. So you'll see that in the next couple of weeks until we can get this plan in place and get moving on a final design. So with that, I'm here to discuss the Chautauqua Trailhead Plan. This is not originally part of Chautauqua. The Trailhead and Ranger Cottage were added before it was designated a National Historic Landmark. The purpose of this presentation is to bring forward the information or lenses we are looking through to ensure the finished product considers the multi-department nature as well as how our community and visitors interact when visiting this historic place. Next slide, please. The Chautauqua Trailhead Plan is being developed to guide implementation of updates at the Ranger Cottage and general trailhead area. It's probably not going to shock you when I say that Chautauqua is the most visited trailhead in our system. The number of visits to OSMP has increased from 4.7 million in 2005 to roughly 6 million today. Specifically at Chautauqua, the average daily visits has increased from 956 visits in 2017 to over 1,100 visits in 2021. Visitation is now stabilized to around 1,000 visits per day. But this amount of visitation has put a strain on our infrastructure, especially relating to parking congestion and the need for restrooms. Next slide, please. So why are we doing this? In a nutshell, to manage visitation intentionally. This heat map shows the intensity of use with our main trails being more heavily used than baseline road. We are focusing on improvements at the Ranger Cottage to increase contacts with visitors for E and O purposes and set them up for success before they head onto our trails. Next slide, please. Another reason for the site plan is that it was called for in the West TSA. The West TSA notes, a site plan at Chautauqua should include the trailhead, including parking, entrance and egress, and signage to address congestion and safety concerns. Next slide, please. The Chautauqua Trailhead Plan will check off many master plan strategies across all tiers. And we want to convey a welcoming facility that is safe and inclusive for all visitors. Next. It seems rather simple, right? However, the area is very complex. The area east of Blue Bell Road is considered within the city. The area to the west is within the county and outside city limits. A portion of the trailhead is within the National Historic Landmark, requiring Landmarks Board review. And a portion of it is leased to the Colorado Chautauqua Association, or CCA. Community Vitality and OSMP collaboratively manage the parking lot. Transportation and Mobility manages the roads. Public Works manages the utilities and Parks manages the areas east of Connect Drive. There is also Camp, the Chautauqua Access Management Program. That initiated the shuttle service, manages the paid parking program and set up the neighborhood parking permit area. We shouldn't underestimate the task at hand, as there are many layers to this property. However, the visitor doesn't see these layers. They don't see the line between the city and county, nor the stakeholders at play. The community and visitors should see a welcoming facility that is safe and intuitive. Next, please. Stepping back, the site has evolved over time with the Chautauqua Green and select structures showing historic significance. Of note is how the site was accessed over its history, including the type of transportation used as well as the location of the entrance. The Ranger Cottage was not added until the mid 1980s. Next, please. Today, Chautauqua has been the focus of at least 10 planning efforts that we know of, all ranging in scope and reach. Only a very small percentage of these plans have actually been implemented. The planning history shows the area evolved through a series of smaller projects, which is why intuitive connections have never existed for the amenities, parking and Ranger Cottage comprehensively. Next, please. Chautauqua has morphed many times over its history. The building arrangement closely resembles the formal arrangement of the early residential tents. The dining hall is prominently placed at the southeastern corner of the Chautauqua Green and was originally meant to be the first view of Chautauqua Park from the entrance. Next, please. Here's a more detailed look of Chautauqua's urban form as it evolved from horse and mule transit to electric cars, bikes and scooters today. Next, please. The 1930s is considered the period of significance. Period of significance refers to the ability of a cultural landscape to convey its historic integrity. During this time, the trolley still existed and the existing vehicle entrance off Grant Street had been added by this time. Blue Bell Road barely appears, but was used to access a small parking area near the Blue Bell Shelter and northern entrance to the Mesa Trail. Next, please. The most notable additions to the urban form in recent times is the Ranger Cottage Trailhead parking and parking along the Chautauqua Green. Next, please. What we do here shows the quality of our organization, as this is the flagship property of OSMP. We're going to start with a holistic look and then apply the budget based on an implementation scope informed by high-level cost estimates. We may need to include some level of phasing. Next, please. This is a map from the Cultural Landscape Assessment, showing contributing elements to the National Historic Landmark. The Trailhead and Ranger Cottage are not contributing features to the historic circulation, nor the building structure features. However, since they are in the viewshed of the Flatirons and contributing features from the Chautauqua Green, special attention will be given to the aesthetic character. Next, please. The overall goal is to explore improvements to the Ranger Cottage and Trailhead area with a focus on increasing the quantity of permanent public restrooms, replacing infrastructure and disrepair, and improving pedestrian circulation where possible. Next, please. These goals can be seen here, such as removing the porta potties, replacing aging and/or unused infrastructure, and improving pedestrian circulation where possible. We will be striving for these goals, all while being welcoming and inclusive to all our potential visitors. Of note is that Lime scooter use was only eight per day from May 1st to August 31st, but increased at the end of August around CU move-in with up to 40 scooters a day. These scooters are near the northeast corner of Chautauqua along Baseline Road and not at the Trailhead. Next, please. We will look at improvements that enhance the aesthetic character of the historic landmark while addressing functional needs such as increasing public restrooms. Currently, the only accessible parking is located outside our trailhead. We also stockpile materials on trails being used by visitors and use water trucks for trail maintenance. The Chautauqua Trailhead Plan will address these essential elements in an efficient way. Next, please. The Ranger Cottage will expand to incorporate permanent public restrooms, increase visitor contacts for E and O purposes, and provide accessibility. The plan you're seeing here shows an expansion with minimal impact to the site and existing building. And only one wall, which is the east side, shows expansion where the permanent public restrooms will likely be located. Next, please. We will also look at the recommendations contained in the Cultural Landscape Assessment completed in 2004. Some of the planned recommendations were addressed in 2013 with the addition of parking and a walkway along Baseline Road. Next, please. Parking is a hot topic at Chautauqua. Originally, a trolley stop was the main access to the property. Past photos show horse parking congestion, stagecoach parking congestion, and early vehicles parked all along the Chautauqua Green. Today, parking at the Ranger Cottage holds approximately 48 vehicles and on average is at 94% occupancy, with 45 vehicles parked during the day. Based on our survey results, occupancy ranges from 91% on weekdays to 98% on weekends. Couldn't find a parking spot earlier today either. Next, please. Beyond the parking, there are other amenities to consider, such as how people get from their mode of transport to their set-off point, where they see information, and who might help them along the way. The average grade from Baseline Road to the Trailhead kiosk is 10% grade. And a typical accessible slope to a building is 5% grade. Knowing this, we will look to lengthen our paths where feasible to increase accessible circulation. Next, please. We plan to look at the area holistically, then refine the implementation scope as the plan progresses based on cost and potential phasing. We will be exploring amenities such as materials in relation to resiliency, multimodal transit needs, past planning efforts, and visitor circulation and wayfinding. The images above show some of the items we know we need to address, such as broken concrete, erosion and sedimentation, safe crossings, and safe access from the trailhead to the trails. Next, please. Chautauqua Trailhead is classified as a T3 trailhead, which ranges from 30 to 80 parking spaces. This is the highest level of service and will follow OSMP guidelines to be consistent with other trailheads of this classification. Some of the T3 amenities include bus parking and additional bike racks. Next, please. How does the Ranger Cottage integrate with the visitor experience? What are the desired future conditions? How can we safely integrate bus parking without passenger vehicles taking those spaces? How do visitors find information if they park in the neighborhood or along Baseline Road? These are some of the questions we will explore as we move forward. Next, please. The design process will utilize 3D modeling to explore how each alternative affects the viewshed and aesthetic character of the historic district. The design process will help to craft this scenario. We will be meeting with stakeholders such as the Landmarks Board and CCA, which is the Colorado Chautauqua Association. We've planned to reach out to the public for input and feedback for inclusion into the final plan. We are currently analyzing opportunity areas, which means we're near the beginning of the design process. Next, please. As for timing, we started this process in 2020, but were placed on hold during COVID. Now that we are moving forward, we have requested CIP funding in 2026 in the amount of $2,450,000. There is a strong possibility that we will receive additional funding through BOSK and other potential philanthropies. and other potential philanthropy partnerships. Next, please. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Bill. Questions, comments? This is a great presentation, and I love talking about Chautauqua. Go for it, John.
Sure, yeah. Thank you for the presentation. This is a very important part of the system. And, you know, the first place a lot of people, when they come to visit, right? That's where I take them, you know, to show them Boulder and what it is. When I was looking through the plan, I noticed that like a bicycle parking area was listed as an optional element. Could you comment on that a little bit? Especially some of the data we saw in P O V S about how people are getting places and things like that.
It may be listed as an optional element, but we really do include them in almost all of our trailheads. Maybe it should be listed as essential.
Yeah, I think from my perspective, that that should be essential at all trailheads when we're rebuilding them. I don't know if... I'm seeing a lot of nods up here as well.
We seem to include them at a lot of access points as well, so I will say that we are intending to include them at Chautauqua. Whether they are an alternate or essential, I think we know that they're needed here.
Awesome. Well, thank you for the presentation. That was great.
Yeah, great presentation, and it's nice to see we're giving this place the due it deserves in terms of planning. I'm just curious, you said the nineteen thirties was the... What's the term of art I'm missing here?
There's... They're called periods of significance.
So what does that mean in terms of the plan?
There's actually four periods of significance if you want to go into it even further, but the nineteen thirties is when the Chautauqua was considered this world destination, or if not just national destination, but people were coming from all over. It's where we thought we had the best piece of history along the way and how people were using it from the community. So if I could back up and reread what I've written, that would be easier for me because I thought about it today after actually talking to Dan about it as well. So give me one quick second.
Is this a like make Chautauqua great again kind of situation where we're going to go back to the nineteen thirties?
No.
I wouldn't mind a trolley.
It's saying the elements we want to preserve, and a lot of it is beyond really where the Trailhead is. In the period of significance, the shelter house is there, which is where you come through King's Gate. Let's say from the bus stop or the pedestrian crossing that's near Tenth Street. The Arbor is in the period of significance, so we don't want to get rid of things that are from that period of significance.
So you take a look at that snapshot and what was there, and those are the things that we will be more likely to focus on preserving or...
Yeah, the term is really more kind of the jargon of like historic preservation. So with the Department of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation, that's terminology that's used like with our historic landmarks because it's a national historic site. That's specific language that just identifies for anyone doing improvement, that key realm of dates where that site is so special. So that's really what that... You know, that's what it means. It's more kind of specific jargon.
And if you look at the Cultural Landscape Assessment, it was done a while ago, twenty years ago now, but it led to it being landmarked. It talks about those periods of significance in very detailed form.
Thanks. Sarah?
How much are we going to be doing in terms of community education there on that site in addition to the improvements you touched on?
There'll be exhibits inside and outside the Ranger Cottage to support that. We don't know what they'll look like yet because we've not gone down that design path, but there are going to be physical things as well as people that can educate from that spot.
I'll just note that that spot is our hotspot from our outreach staff. I believe, I don't know what the percentage of the time our collective outreach spends at the cottage or thereabouts, but it's significant. And we've reported back to this board about the number of contacts we have and how many of them are at the Ranger Cottage or the Trailhead area. So it is already a big focus of ours. I think the idea of improving the circulation is we know from a thousand visits that we're not having contact with as many as we possibly could based on circulation patterns. So how could the Ranger Cottage be a bigger attraction? How could it be easier to flow in and out of the site? And our hope is that between our rangers and our outreach staff and our volunteers that we could have even a greater impact in terms of interfacing with the public on education, interpretation, safety, wayfinding, those things. So that's actually a big goal of ours for this project.
I'm really glad to hear that. When I think of the circulation there, because I do spend a lot of time there and I also host conferences up there at Chautauqua, so I bring people in from other cities and other parts of the world. And so what I see is there's the parking and then there's the bathroom situation, and then there's all there around the sign. I love it when the education, when there are tables set up and we're talking about the wildlife. I notice a lot of people stopping to look at the signage that's there, the big sign. And then also a favorite spot is that seating area that when you go up the main trail just a bit. What I feel like there are a lot of people sort of shifting around and standing and not a lot of reception, outdoor-style reception space or mini amphitheater or any things that are inviting to young children. When my children were young, you know, we'd be across the... We'd be on the lawn or across the park on the playground. And I think it's something I'm seeing pop up in other more new build parks in the area, and I understand it's complex. So we've already got a lot of budget going out the door here, which I think is warranted. But I would love to see that space really be a container for people to... Like to have more welcoming there, more space, physical space that is a stop, stop-by, and rather than just kind of ad hoc tables sitting out there on the trail, a really nice, like a station whenever it's appropriate.
Great.
Yeah.
If I could just add, that's a great point. You know, Bill has a tremendous project here and a great opportunity to work on this. But it's really our role is to serve the department. So like Janelle and her staff with Education and Outreach, Rangers, Emergency Services, that's really who we're serving here. And hearing thoughts like that, and that's really what we're hoping to engage with O S B T and the community in general is to really understand how does our visitors use this space? How could it be better? It's great, but how can it be excellent? So, yeah, and that's part of these elements where we're looking at the key essential things we're doing, but what's really going to make a difference in kind of those optional elements that could support new ways to engage the youth, new ways to engage our visitors. It has an end result if people know where they're going on the system or how not to get lost or what they need to be successful, whether it's traction device during the winter, et cetera.
Yeah, it's from a marketing and P R standpoint, it's like if we're going to invest in the bathrooms, we're going to invest in the circulation of the parking lots. And what people will actually really appreciate and notice is whatever it is that we've invested in making it just feel more... I don't know what the word is because I've been working long hours today. Or I don't have anesthesia or anything wearing off, but I'm so tired. My brain is only half firing. I think you guys know what I'm talking... I hear that you're already thinking about that, and I'm excited to see the plans evolve.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Did I hear you correctly? You're thinking about issuing traction devices to people?
No.
Educating them when they need them.
Yeah, just education.
Someone could make a really great business of selling traction devices. Honestly, if there's ever a moment for a sub to invite a subcontractor in, I really think that is actually not a bad idea to rent them out or something.
Should have looked at our fee study.
Yeah.
How much charge for it? Yeah, I think, and all jokes aside, I think just the more we can engage, you know, as we talk about presence on the land and how do we engage with our visitors, and whether it's regulatory framework or where they can... Trail closures, having the right equipment, it, you know, reduces emergency rescues that are needed and that sort of thing. So this is that key place where we're seeing a lot of visitors. And how can we interact and engage? And just, we always say, set them up for success, but whether it's, you know, preserving the ecological values of the area or the recreation experience. But probably not selling traction.
Okay, so, or do you want to say something? Okay, go. No, go last.
So, thanks, Bill. That was really great. And I guess I'm going to make my pitch for really high-quality materials, very permanent natural materials. I think it was about twenty years ago, there was a bathroom that the Park Service built in the Delaware Water Gap National Recreation Area that was, you know, all like local native Pennsylvania schist walls that were two feet thick and copper standing seam roof, and it cost three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and people were all up in arms that we paid three hundred and thirty gosh darn thousand dollars for a couple of toilets. And, you know, they get a million visitors a year or something like that in the Delaware Water Gap, and it's a, you know, it's one of the jewels of the system, and it makes a difference to people when they see really terrific structures that are really permanent and really beautiful. And so things like the, you know, on the west side of Connect Connect where the parallel parking is, there's a stone gutter which has recently been torn out. And I miss it. You know, I don't want a concrete gutter to replace the stone gutter, right? If the stones in the gutter are, you know, three inches thick and they get knocked out by the snowplows, let's consider putting in, you know, twelve-inch-thick granite stones that are cut like a gutter on the top, so they do the job and they don't move ever. You know, you put them in once. I'm just urging you to spend freely if you've got the budget because this is a big, this is a big place. This is the place that gets the visitation. This is the showcase. And when we cut corners and use cheap materials, we're rebuilding in five years and people get sick of it. And, you know, we've got trailheads that are being rebuilt too often, and I've got friends who are saying, you know, well, they just goddamn did the South Marshall Trailhead, and now I've got to find another place to go again. You know, it would be nice to just say, well, we're building something that's got a fifty-year usable lifespan here or a hundred-year and has a sense of beauty and permanence and local materials if possible. I saw, you know, that there was something about using sustainable materials, but I didn't see anything about using great materials. And I really would love to see that where possible. And, you know, something that's like a brand-new rough-hewn curb that's two feet deep, you know, looks kind of like, wow, they spent a lot of money on that granite. But, you know, it gets nicked up by a few cars and cudged by a few wheels and rolled over by a few trucks and starts to look like it's always been there, and that's what we want, or at least that's what I want.
I'll just add to it is that we've actually worked on the stone detail already for that gutter because it was the wrong detail that was put in many years ago. The one we put east of the Ranger Cottage is kind of the right detail, and it's been lasting really long, but all of Chautauqua unfortunately needs to replace that same area.
Wow.
Yep.
Well, thanks for listening to my soapbox speech.
Three hundred thousand dollar bathroom. Go.
By the way, that would be a million-dollar bathroom in today's construction costs.
Yeah, I was gonna say the one that we were talking about was pretty expensive when you add up all the time that you had to go to every single department and talk about it. So John stole my thunder on the multimodal transportation needing to be essential. And I'm not really one to advocate for cars, but the second one that's listed under optional elements, vehicular circulation. I guess when I think about that, I think about dropping my kids off at the Thorn camp and not having a place to register them for twenty minutes. And then like there just being a complete, just complete mayhem at nine o'clock in the morning and then when you're trying to get to work. So I don't know, I'm looking at that diagram, if there's, you know, fifteen-minute parking where you have that bus parked? If that's something that could be used during those days, those summer days when camps are going on? And people just need a place to park to get rid of their kids so they can work? I mean, I'm sorry, have an enjoyable nature experience for seven hundred and fifty dollars a week.
Yeah, drop-off is going to be key. I think big buses dropping off and something smaller needs to be considered because even the hotel shuttles, which are smaller, need a drop-off space that could be taken up by a big bus, a school bus, or charter bus at the time. So we'll be looking at all of that.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
So just to sort of piggyback on what Michelle just said and maybe take it a little bit in a slightly different direction, but related, it seems like, you know, with the example you gave of the Lime scooters, Bill, you know, they're only getting use when the kids come back to school. The example Michelle just gave about drop-offs for camp requiring more drop-off lane capacity and what we already are doing with camp and parking management, it really seems like Chautauqua deserves to be studied for, you know, having like a really robust and variable signage program to change, to have multiple different uses for the same areas, you know, depending on what time of year we're talking about. So I hope that's something that folks are thinking about really holistically because we keep hearing more and more reasons why that could help maybe reduce the need for some infrastructure if we just better utilize what we have instead of always... And I'm not saying you always do this, but like the parking lot model for malls where you build for Christmas and then it's empty most of the year, you know, we could avoid that kind of doomsday scenario.
Yeah, we'll look at peak use. We'll look at average daily use too. And we just got a robust set of new data yesterday that I'm just starting to tear into.
All right. Well, we're looking forward to being there in just a couple of weeks.
Yeah, can it... I'd like to just add one last thing. I mean, this is a special place. I'll say it again. It's a legacy. I think a lot of community members are, just like you all, you know, got excited about thinking about what this could be envisioning. I mean, we, as a department, are certainly in the fiscally constrained budget environment. And so we're constantly navigating, you know, what is, what do we need to do versus what would we want to do or like to do? And so I think I welcome those comments, you know, a lot of our capital projects throughout the city. We've done amazing timeless materials, well, you know, we're serving our community. And I think, you know, it's that kind of vision, not to get too cheesy and dramatic, but you all as O S B T, this is a great legacy project for you all to be engaged in and help us with. And I think it could be something where we as a city with the taxpayer funds and that fiscally constrained can say, hey, here's what we can support with our budget while also doing all these great things that are on our, within our purview, resource management, Rangers, all the different things we do. So, and then say, hey, the community could certainly help and bring this about and have some legacy participation in this too. So that's kind of the excitement and the vision. Like, again, we want to look at it well and do really good work that this site warrants, but also remain within our budget realities. So...
Isn't, is there, is it possible for the foundation to have, to earmark funds if we were to bring together business leaders and wealthy individuals in the community for fundraising? And we would need to know what the premium would look like and what that cost differential is in order to actually help raise for that? Yeah.
Absolutely, and that's where you all met Allison Duffy, who's the Executive Director with our Boulder Open Space Conservancy. And so that's already some of the communications and conversations we're having with them. As our nonprofit partner, they can kind of explore those conversations and work with the community. You know, as Bill works with all of our staff to come up with a vision or a plan, again, we can say, here's what we can afford wisely and financially sustainably within our budget. You know, here's the other things. We'd love, you know, rough-hewn granite. You know, all the great things, and here's how we could participate in that. Or if not, here's what we can afford. And so, yeah, and set up those conversations, like you said.
Yeah, so I think what they're, the BOS group can help fundraise for it, but I think there is a technicality in terms of naming, right, and naming rights. And so you can't really get a sponsorship. So like if you wanted a corporate sponsor who wanted this, to fund this one million dollar bathroom, you couldn't actually name it. I think that, am I remembering that right?
You can. It just goes through a very robust process.
Yeah, it's not that easy. Anyway.
I think that, thank you. That's interesting. I think that wealthy individuals and founders and corporations here are all invested in this community being a premium. It increases property values. We do have a really wealthy, highly educated people. We do have a really wealthy, highly educated people that are utilizing all of the trails and it's kind of our pride and joy, we're calling it the jewel. Um, so I think, I think there's an interesting opportunity to raise money and. Um, knowing what it takes to raise money, the first thing you have to have is a number, so is there a way in the process, like as you guys are going into the process. You're already working with the foundation and there is, like, what, we would need to kind of know. We couldn't go and say, well, we have some ideas about copper uh, bathrooms. We need to say, here's what we're raising for, here's this thing, um, is that, is that something that we could work together? Or that's already in process that would be baked into your time and your workflow and everything else?
In design lingo, there's something called the base bid, which is the basics we're planning to do and then alternates, you can call them additive alternates. And each one would have a price and we could know what that price would be um, going forward.
And this, I mean, this is a, from a nonprofit perspective, is just classic capital campaign one oh one. That these things have an anatomy, there's a way to test what the community is likely to spend or be willing to spend. And so, are are you all working with the foundation and is there an idea of putting together a feasibility study for a capital campaign for this project?
We've not gotten that far along, um, you're exactly right, Brady, like that, this is just kind of like the classic example of when. Uh, and so that we would, we could do that, you know, understanding what uh, potential there is, what feasibility there is for.
It sounds like some of us have some experience with these things and so I'd be happy to to help with that.
Absolutely, and and just to be clear, um, you know, we're we're not gold plating, we're not creating something that's very. You know, luxurious and all these things, it's copper bathrooms.
Copper is a way of walking these days, so be careful about copper.
Yeah, but I, you know, I think, like you were referencing National Park Service, you know, there's timeless, nice facilities, these are community facilities. They're for everyone in our community, our visitors, just like you said, Michelle, so if we have an opportunity to do something really well. Um, and you know, like we've looked at slides from eighteen ninety eight and now this is the next iteration of Chautauqua, I think the. Association is interested, um, and how can we do that, but again, that's not the role of open space in particular, you know, we have a lot of. Charter purposes, this is just one asset within our system, but it could be an opportunity where our community really comes alongside says, hey. This is a public place that we want generations to come to explore and and know, so, yeah, but. Bosque, uh, Boulder Open Space, we've just started uh, talking with that board, interested, they've kind of jotted this down over the years as an interest. Um, and that's exactly the role of them to say, hey, we gotta keep doing all the great programs we do, but this one project, as an example, you might help support. The city, so.
I'd say the other part of the equation that Bill mentioned in terms of balancing the funding realities versus the wants is phasing. So we'll be looking at, you know, what elements can go in first without necessarily. Uh, negating possibilities for future elements, so looking at dependencies, what's threaded together in terms of what has to be done at the same time versus what could be done. Subsequently and phasing is also a way from a financial standpoint to eventually get to where you wanna be. Um, but do it in a way where there's some fiscal realities to it, so um, just wanna add that too.
Thank you, um, shall we move on to Pove's?
Yeah, Jeff um, is going to uh, will transition Jeff, so uh, just to remind you, uh, the Pove's discussion is. Is broken up into two main parts. Uh, for this month, we provided you with the report itself and all the number of pages that went with that report. And then our staff presentation on it will actually be in November. And what Jeff wants to lead a a discussion with you all right now for a few minutes is, what are those subject matters, what are those. Elements that are in the report that are particularly interesting to you that perhaps you would like the staff to concentrate a bit. In the presentation in November, or to just to give us the hint or to tee up a particular conversation that you're interested in having in November. So it's such a big report that we thought breaking it up over the two months makes sense, so tonight is not the presentation, tonight's more about. If you've had a chance to look at it, uh, work with Jeff here to kind of tease out what elements are you particularly interested in, so we could plan. A better suited presentation discussion for you next month, so with that, we'll have Jeff kind of kick that off.
Yeah, and and Dan's absolutely correct, I mean, first of all, I'd like to thank um, our human dimension staff. As you all know, we have a variety of staff members, uh, Michelle, I think you actually interacted with some of our staff in the field doing uh. Cameras and other things, um, many of them are uh, out of town and busy and doing things this evening, so I'm just. The spokesperson by no mean, by no means a content expert, um, Francis Bolding, who's our uh, senior manager for our rec. Uh, cultural stewardship team, she is joining virtually, um, but even Francis is a little under the weather, so. Um, I'm, it's my voice that's kind of just the spokesperson to some degree, and like Dan mentioned, this is very introductory. Um, in in fact, the less we dive into the data and the details, the better, um, because I certainly can do. Can't do justice to all the great work our team has done, next month, you'll you'll see them and hear from them and really have. The chance to interact with all their great minds and the hard work they've been doing um, over the past year. Um, but just as we get started, uh, our main goal, like Dan mentioned, we want you to make sure and read the information. We've given it to you in a month, you know, in advance of November even to really interact, um, there's a lot of great data in there, um, hopefully you've you've explored that. Um, but Pove's, you know, public opinion visitor experience survey, it's it's knowing our our visitors or our our customers as you might think of them. Um, and this was really indicated or kind of our, the guidance came from our visitor master plan that we talked about earlier this evening. Um, how do we know our visitors, how do we know uh, what's happening on the system, and so two thousand four, two thousand five, I think that was the first. Two years that we did uh, the visitor data and surveys, um, so we're, I think this is our fourth iteration of collecting data. And just as the slide shows, um, it's really understanding the current status along with making trends over time of how that data is changing. Or how visitation might be changing or those experiences, and we use it um, in a lot of ways, I mean. Even this evening, you heard Bill talking about data consistently, visitation estimates, quality of experiences, accessibility, how people are. Going and and where they're coming from and that sort of thing, so the next slide you'll see, um, really, it's it's the who, what, when, where, how. You know, it's, it's everything you can think of about the visitation on our system, and so that's what these surveys are collecting. Um, that's what the report really um, dives into, so we, again, we really want, um. I guess I would personally say I've heard the board really kind of interact with data and questions over this past year even. As we think about like the thirty six bikeway conversation, even Fort Chambers Poor Farm, a lot of work that we think about, well, who's gonna visit? How are they gonna get there, what are they gonna do, what's their motivation? So the next slide you'll see um, exactly kind of a breakdown of what that data is showing. Michelle, you mentioned earlier the demographic data, that's really important to understand, kind of trends over time. Um, certainly, how do people visit, um, what are they doing, how are they arriving, we've we've talked a lot about bike racks. Multimodal access, we just had a huge conversation about with Chautauqua as an example. And those experiences um, and preferences, why are people visiting, what is their motivation? Are we seeing changes in the type of recreation activity, are we seeing changes in the type of activity, you know, reasons they're they're coming to open space? So all that data is is now kind of collected at our fingertips to really think about and 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 draw uh. You know, decisions from and and think about how that interacts with other aspects of our work. So the next slide is um, we always talk about our master plan and I'll just point out, you guys are familiar with this slide, we do it with every presentation. But just look at all the X's that you see, the boxes checked, um, when you think about visitation, the visitor experience, that's at the core of our charter. You know, the the passive recreation, the enjoyment, the use, the protection of our of our public lands, so this really touches on many aspects of our master plan. Plus the visitor master plan that was done back in two thousand five that we talked about earlier, so very important work. Some of the data can be, you know, some folks love data, they dive into it, they really think about it, others like, oh, okay, but this really is the core of a lot of the work we do. So. Go ahead, I'm I'm trying to, I'm trying to do subtle cues and so, but we'll we'll get through it, just, yeah. Yeah. As, we worked on baseball accuser, but anyway, it's my fault, so some of you may have been en- engaged by some of our staff. Out in the field doing the surveys, we use iPads, tablets to collect the data, it's basically a recreation research questionnaire. Asking those questions, a lot of it has to do with the land management as well, um, and so that's how we're collecting this data. And then, you know, all different aspects of data, if you haven't dug into the report quite yet. Um, but we collect data at many different ways across the system, different times of day, different locations, different activities. Um, different types of visitation, is it groups of people, is it individuals? So, you know, in other words, when we're thinking through this, does it really represent everything on our system and all the the visitors and the. The short answer is yes, when you really get into it, you can see it's capturing a lot of different places, and I think the next slide shows even the map, yeah. Even all the locations a- across the system, so our staff have done a tremendous job, they're out there all the time. Um, and so when we think about, you know, all the different elements, the different areas, whether it's the plains, the foothills, the. The lakes, the stran- streams, the different types of trails, undesigned designated, they've collected data, so it's really representative. Of that, and we, you know, just to show the depth of that, and we'll probably, we'll talk about this a lot more at our next meeting. But just how much data has been captured, seventy four percent response rate um, is pretty good. And you can see all the different locations, um, and the different questionnaires that's been completed, again. Our staff will really go into, is that good or not, how do we feel that that's a good representation? Um, but just to give you a general sense of kind of the the summary of of what we've collected through this um, two year collection. Next, so the technical report is in your packet and it includes the executive summary, so certainly at a bare minimum. Uh, read through the summary, um, it really highlights, the summary in itself will highlight some of those key observations. Or applications, how are we using the data, what are some of the trends we're seeing, you know, maybe some of the highlights of kind of no. Of what we've seen from previous years to now. Um, you know, some of those specifically really get at, you know, starting to answer questions or highlight questions, you know, access versus preservation. For example, a lot of people will always indicate, hey, a lot of support for new trails, new trailheads, um, new ways to to recreate, et cetera. But then also equally high support for balancing our preservation and the ecological values, um, we're seeing, you know. Low amounts of conflict, um, and crowding and that sort of in terms of people's perception. But at the same time, you know, equally, we see some displacement occurring where someone might say, hey, I go to a different location than I used to because of this or that. So just a couple examples of the wealth of information that's in there. The next slide, so speaking of that, this is just a few examples of how we apply this, this visitor data. Um, I'm not gonna read all these, and, you know, you can kind of think through, like I said, even just the topics and the agenda items that come to the board. Um, with, you know, projects or the Fort Chambers Poor Farm, we've kind of mentioned earlier this evening. Everything from the fee study tonight to the Chautauqua Site Plan, that's informed by a lot of this data, visitation, um, access. You know, increase in visitation, all all those sorts of things, so it's policy work, it's day to day management, operational decisions. It's projects, it's budgets, et cetera. So, next, um, so tonight, um, here we are in October, we're definitely just doing this quick intro, November will be the real. Deep dive and kind of the meat of the conversation, um, and so, again, I'm just the spokesperson, I don't know a fraction of what our staff really. You know, who are working on this can can inform, so next month, we really hope to engage with you on that. Um, and I think that's the gist of the slides. Thank you. And the horse ate the staff, I guess, anyway, so, yeah, we 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 collect data, this is just a photo of showing all the different places, I think the report has a picture of a deer. Um, so, which is interesting because it's about people, but the animals are involved too. So tonight was really about, hey, are there key topics that you're interested that I can pass along to our team? Are there any initial questions, you're like, hey, Jeff, can you answer this at least? Uh, but we'd we'd love to kind of get geared up to be as effective and pointed um, next month as we can. Um, the last thing I'll mention is the Power BI, so if you do look in the the packet, the information, there's a link where you can click. Um, Power BI, um, and it's basically kind of a data visualization where you can actually look and see. Um, based on different different variables, like, hey, visitation by age, by location, by recreation activity. It's a great way to kind of get get out of just the report and the words, but, you know, uh, think about some different ways you wanna. Slice and dice the data, so, and I apologize to our human dimension staff, they're probably cringing at how I'm explaining this stuff, but. At least it might be simple speak and easy to kind of talk about, and again, Francis is virtual this evening, so I'll just pause there and. Take, there's Francis, I'll take any questions and we can, or any topics or anything you'd like to provide us with.
So we'd like any burning clarifying questions and things that we want to dive dive deeper into next month, right?
Correct.
Okay, that that we can, that you can kind of structure our presentation around.
Yes, and and even, again, even if it's like, hey, you know, this thing or that thing that we always hear about, like, what does the data say? Like, just give us anything that might be interesting or kind of in the back of your mind that we could kind of, hey, hey, let us use that as an example to show this, how this data really helps inform that. So, yeah, anything.
Okay, I would just add, Jeff, thank you so much and sorry, I'm getting over cold and in and out of losing my voice, but um. But add that, we're really gonna be scratching the surface of this data in the presentation next month, so kind of where to focus, what any. Specific topics you're interested in would be helpful in preparing kind of the selection that we'll highlight, because it will not be a thorough deep dive into everything. You'll have to read the reports for that.
Yeah, and Francis and Jeff, I think there'll be new information in November as well in regarding our visitation data. Uh, meaning, is that correct, is? Up updating you on how many people are coming and that sort of thing uh, to our system, so visitation number data will be also part of November.
So expect a fourth and final visitor use monitoring report for this year in the November packet in addition to. The Pope's report we've shared this month, and we'll present the results from both of those in November, it's a little confusing rolling this all out, so we're trying to. Clarify it a couple of times.
And it even kind of is compliments, remember last month, we did the trails and undesigned trails condition monitoring data. So that was part of this as well in terms of how's the trail condition and now we're hearing about the visitation and the public uh, surveys, so. It all kind of weaves itself together.
Excellent, so, did anybody, yeah, Brady?
I got a few comments, um, so in terms of the report at the next meeting, presume that we've all read the report.
Okay.
And 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 so caller commentary, how are you using it? You know, I I just, I do better when you assume that I've read everything and maybe retain a portion of it. And so if there's things that are really important, re- review those things, but not the whole thing.
Great.
And and I'm curious to know what you think is important and what you're gonna be using. Um, and that being said, I also have a few things that I'm interested in, but that that's like the most underlying thing. Um, one, um, one thing and it's maybe a little, maybe I'm two years late here, but um. Who who isn't visiting? We we've, as the demographics change on the land, those are the people we're interviewing, and so as the visitors get older and more affluent. We're talking to older and more affluent people, and so if you went to a quinceañera. At, near my house at the Elks Club, you'd probably get really different and interesting data, why aren't you there, why aren't you going? And so, again, you can't go out and throw that together the next month, but I I think there's just, we're we're always gonna be tracking with the demographics that are on the land. In with this methodology, and it seems to me some of our equity goals would be well served by talking to the people who aren't going. And figuring out why that is, and are there small tweaks or or big changes that we need to make? To be talking to those people in our next Pove's, because they're actually on the land that time, so I think that's an interesting thing and. And I'd be curious. So I think that's an interesting thing and, and I'd be curious to hear just some, some reflections and thoughts on that in terms of who aren't we hearing from in this data and, and what's the so what from there? Um. Let's see here. I would say that another thing that just occurs to me is I'm really glad that all of our processes aren't, uh, democratic, uh, when it comes to making decisions on the land. Because sometimes the truth is, you know, unless you've actually done trail work, you don't know how hard it is. And people may say they don't want more durable surfaces to walk on, but they're probably not going to complain about it if you do a really good job with it. And so I'm just, you know, I think it's really interesting and I also think that there's, there are times on the land where the customer doesn't really know what they want in the moment. Um, and so that was just one of my, my thoughts in terms of durable surfaces.
Hardening trails.
Hardening trails, yeah. Um, yeah, I guess that's it for me.
Right, thank you, Brady. Is there a way to do kind of a sampling of what you're talking about without having to do a larger survey? But, um, if there were some assumptions that we could make about people who are not there and then doing some demographic sampling of those, um, demographics?
Yeah, or maybe like the extent to which if, are the changes on the land tracking demographic changes in our community? Or is it the fact that those people, for whatever reason, are more representative and it's actually breaking with demographic shifts? I'd be curious to hear, have that context.
I, I really liked that, I, I want to second that a little, I, I want to second that, uh, question of who isn't showing up and sort of, and why? If we're talking about historic Chautauqua, I'm thinking, well, I know what I would like to see there. And it would be nice, this kind of data could help us think of, well, what is the premium copper bathroom version of what's needed? Is it more picnic shelters for the quinceañeras? Like, what is needed, like, what is the larger community actually really want on the land? Um, as we do these renovations, it's kind of fun to think about, so thanks, Brady.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think that Francis and their team could comment a little bit on past methodology of, of, of reaching out to folks that necessarily weren't a visitor, but we reached out to them anyway. And what we found in the comparison between people who weren't visitors and people who are, and why we came up with this new methodology. And so I think Francis could, uh, maybe next month you could ex- I think we explained it in a previous memo, maybe about two years ago before we launched this, but it might be worth bringing up again about comparing results in the past from people who were, who we reached out to, who completed something, but weren't necessarily a visitor. Maybe I'm hacking that up, but I think.
Got it.
Yep.
Yeah, so we've, we have combined questions previously split between resident surveys and visitor surveys into this, um, larger sampling effort for our visitor survey. And we can, um, bring in a little bit more of the rationale for that, thinking we're reaching the most people and the most representative information for who's visiting our system. Um, and also who is in our older, larger Boulder community. Um, I would add that we've been, oh, one big way that we're using this data is comparing visitation demographics by site and, and system-wide locations with, uh, census data. So that can be really powerful and that's actually one way the city is implementing different, uh, racial equity instruments to look at access. So I think you're asking all the right questions and we're excited about them too, and we can highlight some of that.
Go ahead, Herman.
Yeah, so I, I'm kind of thinking of the same, same sort of things and I'm interested that you're using census data, that's cool. So looking at the discussion on page forty-eight, um, where it talks about the notable increase in older visitor population and trend towards more individuals visiting alone, suggesting that O S M P is catering to older population and that people are increasingly recreating on their own. Um, survey reveals a higher socioeconomic status, um, indicating that O S M P may be more accessible to those with higher incomes and educational attainment. And I'm, I'm looking at the, the discussion and I'm thinking, you know, there are a lot of sort of, um, you know, macroeconomic and social and locational reasons for this. Like, for example, if you go back thirty years, you know, we're not talking about billionaires living west of Third Street in Boulder, right? And, and a lot of neighborhoods that are really close to O S M P land are getting really expensive. And then you look at other parts of the survey where it says, you know, for example, you know, there's a pretty goodly percentage of the visitors that are coming more than once a week. Well, your Denver visitor is not driving up to Boulder once a week to visit O S M P. But the guy who lives at Fifth and Maxwell and does the Anemone Loop four times a week for fitness or for his, you know, private time or whatever, he's, he's, you know, probably got a lot of money and is older. If he lives at Fifth and North Street or, you know, Third and Maxwell, or, you know, whatever. That's, that's just Boulder geography and demographics and economics. And it's, and so when I read a sentence that says that O S M P is catering to older populations, I'm not sure I agree with that. I don't see how your trail design, you know, caters to older people. I think older people are living closer to O S M P land in greater numbers than they used to. And when I see a characterization like O S M P may be more accessible to those with higher incomes and educational attainment, I'm not sure that O S M P is doing anything to block or is really actively blocking people of lower educational and economic status. But I'm sure that O S M P is much more accessible to people with high education and high wealth, because if you want to talk about accessibility in terms of physical proximity, yeah, the rich people who are older and better educated live next to O S M P land. So I'm, you know, I, I think it's important to, to do the stuff you're doing, talking about looking at census data and things. But I, I'm concerned a little bit about the conclusions that we're drawing in the discussion section. Because I think you're, in, in some ways, it seems like we're needlessly self-flagellating on, on some of the, the reasons that are really more societal and more, you know, the distribution of, of where people live and what kind of people live where.
Francis, do you?
Way well taken, yes, I, you know, I think your interpretation of that, maybe that sentence is poorly written, but I think, um, your interpretation of that is exactly what we're looking at. Like, who, who has access to open space? And then the so what, and what do we do with this information? You know, we're just scratching the surface of that, but I think the first step is to know, um, kind of those basic questions, who is there? And then we can get more into the why and what, what does that mean for management? So now that we have, you know, two decades worth of trend data, understanding things like demographics and preferences, um, that, that is really a foundation that we need to start asking and answering some of those harder questions. But I, I would not say all the answers are in this report.
Yeah, and so, I mean, just like Lauren was mentioning earlier with the Equity Action Plan and thinking through, you know, it, the sentence might be revised to say, di- given our demographics of our residents and proximity to open space, these are the, you know, types of folks that are visiting more often or have access. Not characterizing like we're catering to it or something like that. But more importantly, are there barriers we've identified that could be preventing certain, uh, demographics from visiting or recreating? Um, and how do we start to overcome that and so?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the, that's the, the end goal is, given the things that we can't change, like how much a house, uh, you know, Third and Arapahoe costs, um, what can we change to make people of all different, yeah, backgrounds, ethnicities, you know, income brackets feel comfortable coming and enjoying this area? But to think that we're going to change visitorship necessarily? When, you know, the guy who lives at Third and Arapahoe can hike right up the canyon out his front door.
Yeah.
Every day. And, you know, somebody who's not lucky enough to live there has to make an effort. And, and the stats on the people who do a lot of repeat visitation more than once a week, being locals and people who live nearby, you know, that's, that's really instructive. And so, you know, the conclusions that, that I guess I'd like to see more of are, you know, now that we know all this stuff, what are the things we can do to make everyone feel welcome?
I want to jump in there because you eventually got to where I wanted to go anyway, which is, yes, we have a certain demographic here. Um, but what are we doing to address those barriers? Because you do have those strava folks out there and they've got their hydration packs and they're running and they do that probably five days, seven days, all night long. They know that there are running groups that run all night long. Um, I don't know why I was on that list, sir, because that was not me, but somehow I got on that group. Um, but I, I think, you know, what can we do to make it more welcoming? Because when you do see a group of, um, Hispanic folks coming up the trail and they're like barely huffing and puffing up the Chautauqua Trail and they've got their water jug, not like an expensive hydration, uh, Nalgene bottle or something, but they're like the milk jug style of water and, and they're snubbed. You know, but, and they're passed by people who are, are strava, get out of my way, you know? Uh, like, what, what are we doing? I know that we have like now some, some Spanish-speaking Rangers and so this data is informing, like, how can we make things, uh, make the environment more welcoming for them? And so I love, I'd love to hear how you're using the data and I know, Janelle, this is your world. Like, how are you using this data to, uh, for your programming and, um, for your hiring for Rangers? And that, that part really interests me. Um, I do want to just mention though, the, the, the fact that, um, you know, yes, we have wealthy people living really close to, to open space. Um, and they can walk there. Um, but we're icing out the people through parking fees and in the south. Now, you know, so they're, they, they clearly don't live in Boulder and, and we see the opportunity to charge them. And so how are we, how, how is that? Yeah, how, how are we advancing our equity goals by charging people who are on the perfer, in those, those lots or those trailheads that are, are the closest to another county? And, um, so I, I would like to know how we're using this data to inform codified parking fees um, a- and still trying to meet our equity goals. Because it, it just seems, um, yeah, it just seems counterintuitive to me that we want, we want this thing, we want to be an inclusive community, invite people to our public lands, not just people who live there and can afford to live right next to it. Um, but what are we actively doing to be welcoming to other people? Uh, okay, and the other thing, I, um, I did read it because I, I really love this stuff. Um, but I, yeah, I want to, I, I guess drill in more on the multimodal access stuff. Because I, I read that, you know, that statistic that I was using about Marshall Mesa, thirty percent people arrive there by bike is actually way low, lower than what's in this report. I thought it was thirty percent, it's actually forty-seven. And I, I was blown away by that. I was also interested in, um, the dowdy draw statistic, which is just down the road and not as accessible by bike, um, but it is a bike trail. Um, is, I think, I think there's ninety-one percent of people who are driving to that. So like what, and I think this will come up in our retreat, like, I, I want to look at this data in that, that lens as well. I know we won't have, but I'm, I know we won't have a lot of ti- time between now and, um, the retreat to, to dive into it. Although I, I definitely, um, that caught my eye right away. I was like, oh, yeah, this is actually what we're talking about.
Right.
So multimodal access is one of my, the, the things that I would like to focus on next month, Francis.
Wonderful, that sounds good. Um, I, I will add a quick clarification that, um, I think what you're looking at in the report is a larger site than just the trailhead. It includes, um, different access points for that, for kind of that larger Marshall Mesa site. Um, it includes like Cowdrey where we have a lot of people coming in from, on bike, but might be parking at the county trailhead, um, that are entering our system onto a bike. So there is always some nuance in understanding the data, but that's, that's what we're here for and to, to do those deep dives. Um.
But they arrived at our, they arrived to O S M P Trail by bike. But you're, what you're saying is the, they, yeah, okay.
Exactly, yeah. So there's a lot of different ways, I, I think one of the challenges and, and exciting things about this data set, and especially when you start combining it with our counter data set, is, uh, you can draw different boundaries. But that can sometimes give you, so it's, it's significant what site, what you're calling a site, what area you're looking at can change, especially when you're asking those questions.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, I think John wants to hit his button, go ahead.
I do, I, I had one question, uh, I've been look, uh, the data was really great, I really enjoyed reading this report. I always love looking at this data that you all collect. Um, I was looking at the crowding data and trying to understand it. Um, and at the surface, it kind of looks like maybe it's saying that crowding's not a problem, but also maybe we don't have enough data there. So I would love to see a little more in-depth analysis on, uh, the data you have on crowding. Thank you.
And I don't know why that reminded me, but the second piece I was going to respond to Michelle is that, um, with, with kind of how this applies to the fee study, I think you heard mentioned that that is also, some of the results of that are going to be in the next phase of the fee study. So, um, like we're just working with Sam, looking at residency and how that affects different fees. But I think we won't probably be able to do too much of a deep dive in the Pope's presentation for that, but there will be other avenues to bring in the Pope's data and all of our monitoring data into these projects. And we have some future projects planned that might look more at crowding and conflict too, so lots more to come on that, John.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Is that enough information to help inform you for next month?
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, we, that, that would take the whole time, this is wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, that's really helpful and, you know, I think I'm just kind of hearing themes and taking a lot of notes. I mean, I think one of the, it's been a little bit of focus on overall equity and just how is this data used? How does it align with others? What barriers can we start to think about that we're reading from the data? Um, I was just looking at Janelle and we might be able to speak to some of their programming and education outreach staff and how they're using data or how it compares to what, what they do and what they understand about our visitors. And so, yeah, that's just one theme, for example. But yeah, I think this has been very helpful. Um, Francis, anything you want to wrap up or summarize or any further?
She wants to get better.
Yeah.
She wants to go to bed. I have, I have one more thing I want to throw in there. Um, before you do a wrap is, uh, just on the family side, I, I am really interested in if, if what we have, um, we're talking about equity and we're talking about race, but I also, and, and class. But there is an actual, um, age is a really important variable in, in my mind that stands out in what we've been saying. Um, I, we, we really need to be getting families and children engaged in our trail system for all the obvious reasons. Uh, so I'd love to hear more about what's happening out there, what types of recreation are families doing? Um, it's ultimately for individu- it's like, what's in it for me? That's what people are thinking every, we, we all get up in the morning, we think, what's in this for me? Whatever I'm doing, my breakfast, my lunch, my hike, my time with friends. So I'm curious what's in it for people right now? And are we, then we can take a look at, are we serving, are we again, planning for these improvements um, to be serving the people that are out there and also considering the welcome factor and trying to, um, uh, prioritize improvements that will be more welcoming, um, to the families in particular of all race, class, uh, et cetera. But age, I would like to see the family stuff, yeah.
Great.
Uh, and last comment is the Power BI stuff is really cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, I think that's all we had for this item.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
So we'll let the director have an update?
Uh, just a couple, a couple minor ones. Um, yeah, just a, a few minutes or, or maybe one minute, just, uh, uh, hone in on more specifics regarding the D R M S work. Is staging, D R M S will begin staging on October twenty-first. Uh, doesn't mean that earth will actually be moved, but probably fencing materials, staging.
So Dan, you're, you're talking about over there at South, South, uh,
At Marshall Mesa.
Marshall Mesa, the coal seam.
The coal seam mitigation work. Uh, by the end of the next week, we probably will have the interim trail available. So, um, we are well-suited to make sure, in fact, I think the interim trail will be available before the staging begins. So, uh, um, where I think we're well-suited, uh, uh, for that. Um, and last but not least, just want to, uh, we kind of talked a little bit informally and maybe we could actually get this done with now versus an email. Uh, the January's meeting falls, uh, one week after New Year's, which is, creates some problems for staff in order to do all the preparation work that's needed ahead of a meeting. And it would be really beneficial to move that meeting to Nov- uh, January fifteenth. Uh, we did check other schedules to make sure we weren't conflicting with additional, uh, city meetings and we're not. Landmarks Board meets both the eighth and the fifteenth, so one of them we're going to hit anyway. That's the only conflict that we've been identified at this point. We also have confirmed that Council Chambers is open on the fifteenth. So if it works out for trustees and we're not sort of displacing- So if it works out for trustees and we're not sort of displacing any of you, we would prefer if we could meet on the fifteenth and we will start to change those dates and make the, make those notice notices, starting probably with our field notes, beginning in the October field notes edition and in subsequent agendas. So just want to maybe reach out to all you, does anybody know that they have a conflict on the fifteenth?
Looks like thumbs up here.
Okay, it's official, we are moving the meeting to December, January fifteenth and we'll begin to.
He is not going to be here, she doesn't care.
So, great, thank you. And that's it for my updates.
All right, so this might be a record, let's go ahead and adjourn at eight twelve PM.